Josh, you ready?
I mean, give me a script and I'll talk for hours. But, alright, so this is the Corvallis School District Budget Committee meeting. For, there's still more than enough for a quorum. So at this point, we will open it up for committee discussion, questions, and any requests for more information from staff. And with that, do any members of this committee have any further questions for staff, other than what has already been asked and answered? Shawna?
Thank you, and thank you Lauren for your continual answering of questions, sending those questions back, posting them out to the community. I spent time reading through all of the updated FAQs today to make sure that the questions that I was bringing hadn't been answered somewhere. But I had a question, as I was going back through, I'm on page seventy-one and seventy-two, just looking at the requirements by reporting function for all funds. And I was looking at the contingencies, the unappropriated ending fund balance, and I was just trying to match that up with the different pieces that go into the reserves. So I know the reserves have the contingency reserves, rainy day, and unappropriated ending fund. So I was wondering if, it seems like seven thousand is the unappropriated ending fund, is that correct? And then...
And in the contingencies, and then the five in the reserves. And the unappropriated ending fund balance, we cannot legally touch in a fiscal year, so it has to roll forward. And the other two can be moved with, but I would have to come to the board or Ryan and ask for that, and that would have to be done in a resolution.
Right, the other, the other two are those rolled up in that six thousand...
Combined together, yeah.
Contingency slide, okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify, I was going through and calculating numbers and percentages and...
Yeah, and it's based on, it's based on operating revenues, which does not include beginning fund balance. So if you're trying to calculate and you're like, why doesn't this add up? It's because you have to remove the beginning fund balance from that.
Okay, because I was calculating with the number that was in there right now with the requirements total, that those two numbers come out to ten percent, where the total requirement was twelve and a half percent, and so there, you said that then, from that total, we would remove the...
You have to take away the fund balance.
Okay.
And just, just so that we're clear, we're on page seventy-one and seventy-two, which is all funds, and what we're talking about is actually only applicable to the general fund. So there is a, there would be more for all funds in there, I wouldn't calculate based on this page, because that's not going to give you the right numbers.
So it's only calculated off of the general fund total?
Yes.
The reserves are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you Lauren.
So real quick, can you elaborate a little bit more on why we can't do anything with the unallocated funds?
That is state law, and the definition of unappropriated ending fund balance, so it's not appropriated. And so, and it's not accessible, there's some, there's a few, if you read the local budget manual, there's a very few instances where you could do that through action. But it's not anything that's applicable to what we're talking about now.
And then I have one other question that came in to me from a community member this afternoon. I'm not one hundred percent sure it is relevant to the budget committee, but they asked, and the rest of the school board is here, so I'll ask too. They wanted to know, why do we have sustainability specialist for the district? Is this a state mandate? Did the district set the expectation? And is it really needed when we're cutting significantly and there is frustration with high administration costs? That is, you know, not my personal question, but that is a verbatim question I got from a member of the community. So I've told them I would ask it tonight.
That is a position that's been built into the budget for a number of years. We had a person who just left the position, and so we refilled the position. Initially, it was a full FTE position, and now it's a half FTE position. So we made that reduction in the last budget, or two years ago, but we've made that reduction.
I was just gonna add in too that there's been feedback from part of the community around sustainability and ecolliteracy, and that was like a very strong input when we were developing our board goals, so I would assume that that position aligns with that. And so I think that there's, obviously there's multiple needs in the community and ask, and so it's, there's... Everybody may not think that one position should be there versus other ones, and that is speaking to one of the very specific board goals that we received a lot of community input on over the course of, it was over about a year and a half we spent developing the board goals and communication with several communities' members.
That's what I figured, but as I said, I was asked, so I figured I'd bring it up, thank you. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Bernie?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on the rainy day fund contingency fund. Is that amount invested, or is it just sitting as an unused portion of the budget?
No, we do invest excess dollars, like for example, we've talked about, I think previously, is we receive the majority of our tax revenue in November, so we get like a big lump sum of money, and then we don't actually need it all in November or December, right? And so we create an investment plan throughout the year that matches with our cash flow. That money isn't necessary, I can't say this dollar was invested and this one wasn't, like, we have one pool of money, and I don't really separate it out that way. We have to have that as a fund balance at the end of the year, so it has to be accessible as cash. So, yes, I mean, in theory, yes, that's invested, and we do make over a million dollars on our investments. Obviously, stock market dependent, just like it is in personal finance. We have a lot more restrictions on what we can invest in, because it is public dollars, so there's just a lot of regulations around that. So we're not investing in anything that's super risky. We, we have guaranteed returns on all of our investments, so we're always making money.
The guaranteed returns, are they reflected in this budget, or what has it been?
There's a line item. It's fifteen hundred, so you'll see that within, on the resources page. Trying to find it, sorry. Okay, if you check page fifty-seven, and there's under fifteen hundred earnings on investment, you'll see we have a proposed amount of one point eight million dollars. It's, it's in the first section, on page fifty-seven, the one hun, one thousand level is all resources from local, and so one five zero zero earnings on investment. One point eight two million dollars budgeted revenues for next year.
I have a question about the reserves as well. I think that folk have been talking about using terminology, but we're all talking about like rainy day contingency reserves, and there's, just so it's clear for folk, there's like three different sections right under the contingency fence. Yeah, so that's what you were talking about earlier, the third one, we can't touch because of state law, so that leaves...
Yeah, I have it actually pulled up, just because it's legal language that I don't have in here. It's voluntary conversion, civil disturbance, or natural disaster.
Thank you.
Those are the only ways we can touch unappropriated.
And then the other two, it doesn't make sense to use because it can't really go to staff costs, right?
Yeah, the way the policy reads is that should not be used on recurring expenditures, only on one-time expenses. So staffing, the way, I mean, we would have recurring costs with the staffing, because everyone's under a contract. And if we were to terminate the contracts early related to the language in the contract, then we still have liability through unemployment and other aspects. So it's not, staffing really can never be a one-time cost.
Right, that's how I read it last year, so maybe we'll keep you, maybe we won't next year, it feels, it doesn't feel good to me.
No, whenever we go into a staff member that may be on for a year, it's very clearly defined in their contract as temporary, and we have to follow all of the agreements specifically to OSEA and CE.
Yeah, my other question has to do with the several asks that we have about reallocating a specific line item in the reserves into staff lines, and that's why I'm asking this question, these questions, because those would be considered recurring costs, so we can't really move reserve funds into recurring cost lines, correct? And, and so that's what it sounds like, you just answered that one. And the other part is, and maybe this is a Ryan question, but if we requested the reallocation of reserve funds, which we actually can't due to our policy, even if we could reallocate them into staffing lines, that does not guarantee specific staff would remain, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was really clear to the community, that no matter what is this, what is recommended by the budget committee, that wouldn't guarantee specific staff, our programs would continue necessarily. It's not a guarantee, is what I'm trying to say. Go ahead, Teresa.
So just clarifying, I think what we're saying here is that the budget committee does not get to decide who the district is gonna hire or keep. That's beyond our purview, even if we do move money, it would still be a decision that's beyond this group. Is that right?
Correct, and we would need to follow the language in our contracts. So we have agreements with our certified union, as well as our classified union, and within those many-page documents, it specifically describes how we must go through a layoff and recall process. So really, if we were just to circumvent that process, that then opens the district up to other liability for employment claims. So, yes, we have to follow our agreements, and the budget committee has to stay within their operating realm.
And even within that, to not work with, in consultation with unions, doesn't sound like a good move either.
No, I mean, we spend a lot of time coming to those agreements with our unions, and so going against what is in the contract, I mean, you could ask them specifically, but my guess is, is they probably wouldn't think that...
We were to shift money, this is hypothetical, we were to shift money out of the rainy day funds, how would we, what is the mechanism for replenishing it in the out-years?
Yeah, the superintendent has three years, and they have to present their plan when you consider that, and they have to replenish the amount within three years.
So, further on in the hypothetical, if the, the resources continue to go down for us, that means we have to, to replenish that with additional cuts elsewhere to, to make that work as part of the plan, right?
It creates a compounding effect, and I, I want to be clear that I'm not necessarily projecting that our resources are going to go down. The problem is, is our resources, like, the line is fairly flat, a little, little bit, and our expenditures are like this. They're not in alignment, and so we have to reduce expenditures to be at the same level as our revenues. And we are not a business that generates revenues, that's not what we're here to do. Mobile goods is continually going up, we rarely see those costs going down, right? And so if we know that, and we know that staffing costs are going up, we actually have committed agreements with our, our union groups. um, with our, our union groups on contracts. I don't see how we could present to you a reasonable plan to replenish a reserve in three years.
Judah?
So, um, the rainy day fund represents a percent of our budget, that's correct?
Operating revenues of general fund.
If our um, total operating revenue reduces, how, um, what would happen to that percentage in the rainy day fund? Would we remove funds from the rainy day fund and allocate them elsewhere? How would that hypothetically work?
Yeah, so it's set, it's set in the budget and then it also is set on actuals, right? So we know that actuals never came, come in the same as a budget number. Um, and so, at, I'm tracking all year long to make sure that we're going to meet that target. And if I was to think we weren't gonna meet that target, then that's when I, uh, Ryan and I would be coming to the board to talk to you about that. Um, and so it, it's always in motion, it's never like, just because this uh, was calculated when we did the budget, that's not necessarily my target. So if there, if our actual revenues go up, then the reserve goes up. If our actual revenues go down, then the reserve requirement goes down. So it's constantly in flux with what our actuals are. Did that answer your question?
And I guess, um, let's say if our, the amount in the rainy day fund needs to go down, where does that money go? Like, where is it going to?
We're spending it, I mean, on costs. Um, or, I mean, we can carry forward more than the twelve and a half percent, that we're not restricted, there's no top. Um, but what we have to constantly balance is like, are we spending enough of that on students that are in our buildings now? Um, because that's what we're, we're here to serve students here now. And we have to balance that with like this operational um, continuity piece where, yeah, we wanna be here to serve kids in ten years. So, decisions we make now could impact ten years down the road. And so it's this like tricky balancing, um, of how much do we hold to make sure that we can continue to operate? Um, and also, how much can we spend so we make sure that we are serving our kids that are here now?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Cassandra.
So, in line with a lot of the questions that others have brought up around contingency funds and rainy day, you talked about on our, um, on, um, some funds that are inaccessible. Me, and why we can't use them and what they could be used for. What about when we think of the rainy day fund, what are some of the things that that has actually been used for effectively? Because I think that's what the community is pointing at, like, why aren't we using it? Maybe you can tell us what it's there for.
I don't have context for that because it's never been used since I've been here, so do you?
The, the policy was um, updated um, in the midst of the period of time where this schools, um, districts received three different budgets during one school year because of the recession. And many school districts around the state went into furlough days. Um, see, this district did not have to do that in the same dramatic way as other districts. And so, as a result of that, the board at that time, which does predate me, um, spent a lot of time at, looking at policy DA. They had conversations about should it be dollar amounts or should it be percentages? Um, we've had multiple conversations over the years about what is, what do you deem to be an emergency? And most years, we bring policy DA forward in the middle of the year, um, just to make sure that we're sort of truing it up and making sure we all feel, the board feels comfortable with it being maintained the way it is. Um, and so that's how, um, that's the time it was used in terms of trying to avoid furlough days, which are days that everyone's off, no one's paid and no one comes to school, and that's what happened during the recession.
Uh, I know in my time on the board, we have um, had a couple of times where we've needed to fund a request that probably did predate you. Um, that were large one-time expenses that were time-sensitive and there wasn't really an opportunity to not, we, we had, we had to do the repair. There was a boiler, um, I think this was like my first week ever on the board. Um, we had to call a special meeting in the summer because the boiler failed. And it was hundreds of thousands of dollars repair, it was not in our budget, that did have to come out of that fund. And so, we do have sometimes one-time costs that if we don't meet them, will disrupt services. And if we do meet them, um, will allow us to keep our doors open and keep going.
I can give some examples to it, last year, you remember, I don't remember what month it was, maybe January, February, we had um, ice storm issues which caused pretty significant damage um, at shuttle and middle school. And in that situation, um, yes, we have insurance that covers those things. And if anyone here has had to file an insurance claim before, it's not like they just turn over the money to you, especially in the tune of multiple millions of dollars in one, like, just call them and say, hey, can I have a couple million dollars? It doesn't usually go that way. Um, and so that's a scenario where if I wasn't able to work through that process with them within the fiscal year, I would have had to come to you and say, hey, like, we're gonna need this money. And my replenishment plan would be when we get the insurance payment, it's like sports practices where they could, their schedule for PE, like, all of those different things, to me, that would fit within that. And based on timing, I didn't have to ask, it just, we just did the thing and, and took care of itself. But that's an example of where, and how that might like play out.
Sammy?
Yeah, I just wanna build on this discussion, uh, I wanna highlight what Ryan mentioned. I believe it is within the biennium around or shortly after twenty eleven. And uh, just imagine now we're hoping for eleven point, or forecasting eleven point four billion dollars from the state. The situation was, you get that promise that the budget is passed. And within the biennium, within the two years, the state says, we're revising how much you're going to get. So school this year, you could have a decision from the state where uh, you won't get them, uh, the funds. And that is, the best analogy I can think of it is selling your fire extinguishers or uh, the beams from your seismic uh, structures, uh, seismic resiliency structures of your school in order to be able to operate one extra day, uh, or even keep your days operational on the same level that they are. Uh, so that's really our insurance policy to make sure we can keep the lights open, uh, shall an adverse event happens. And as Lauren mentioned, uh, just to make sure, I'm not sure the boiler, maybe we allocated funds immediately and then we got reimbursed through PACE by the end of the year, so we have the property and casualty insurance. Uh, nevertheless, to make sure we are able to ramp up immediately, uh, the reserves that we have are at a level that barely touches two months of uh, operations.
Just one month, a little over one month.
A little bit, a little bit more than one month. Paying the bills, paying salaries. So, um, it's not, not common standard, every district has a different level of reserves. And uh, we have a commitment with the community that the school board passes this as a policy that happens in a very deliberate manner, uh, because that's a decision not for one year. It is a decision truly for probably a decade or decades, uh, whether you have reserves that will help you to stay afloat if there's an adverse event or not. Um, and just to, to draw analogy of how significant something needs to happen, I don't believe we drew on the uh, reserves or rainy day funds during COVID. Uh, because the state had some level of resiliency that allowed us to operate uh, our budget uh, granted in a very flexible and different manner for our schools. But we were able to operate with the resiliency of the state. So think about something even more adverse, like a recession, uh, that's, that's really impacts us not being able to offer cash flow.
A couple more things on that too, what, things you said Sammy is, another thing about reserves is it's supposed to be used for some, for unexpected events. This is not unexpected, we've been talking about this for several years. Um, and, and secondly, you mentioned that districts have all sorts of policies. Um, obviously, that's a lot of work of what the board does is um, to review those policies and work with Melissa and on those and other staff. But the interesting thing is, is it's not required, a reserve is not required. You can go and look at all, at most people's board policies online, um, and there's all, you'll see all sorts of different things, right? And I think people are, are saying, they're comparing and saying, well, we have the highest reserve um, out of anybody in the state or, or whatever the example may be. From what I can tell, we have the policy that has the highest amount. What that looks like in practice is not the same. I mean, we, we went around and round on this last year and there's districts that are carrying over a thirty percent ending fund balance. So that is them op, like, that is them deciding what is that dollar amount that they feel comfortable with um, to save and use forward for previous years. So when you actually look at our comparator districts and look of, at what's actually happening in practice, um, they're all the way, um, I think that the average, let me look real quick here. The average in the comparison group is eighteen point two percent. Okay, the low is thirteen point one six and the high is thirty-three point nine eight. So that's in practice, and how do they get to those numbers without showing it in the budget like we do? They pad other areas of their budget with large numbers. I budget to actual projections and keep, we budget everything down to that amount. Do we recognize the savings? Yeah, typically we do, because we know our biggest expense is salaries. Um, and we don't have a hundred percent of positions filled a hundred percent of the time. So, I, I do feel like this methodology is much more transparent um, than putting extra money, this is actual salary costs with, attached to actual FTE, attached to actual people. Um, and so, we're building our budget based on that. And so, it's just different, everybody uses a different methodology. I can tell you in my last district when I budgeted, I didn't, well, I was also a baby budgeter, but I didn't have, um, I didn't know a lot about like the different methodologies that people were using. And I just put additional dollars in different line items that, yeah, we might spend that. But I wanted to budget down to the very dollar as opposed to having like set reserves. And so, just because it's not in someone's policy doesn't mean they're not doing it in practice.
Go ahead, Jan.
Uh, thank you, uh, Lauren, for introducing the methodology that the school district has adopted. So I assume this methodology is being used uh, um, by the district over time, right? Like, uh, already in the past five or three years, right? So now I'm, I'm wondering if you have the number to show the difference between the planned budget and actual cost? Because the, the report just show, just shows the actual numbers, right, for the previous year. So, do you have such numbers to share?
You actually, I don't have them in my mind, but it's actually something that is notated in our audits every year. Um, and so that is one of the line items that you would find in that document, which are also available on our website. Um, we, in the last few years, I would say we've sat between about fifteen and eighteen percent um, of carryover, which is like what happens in actuality. Um, and that, a lot of that is, is related to the savings. I would say specifically during and, and immediately following COVID, we had a really difficult time hiring and so our fund balance grew. We also during COVID, didn't need as many staff, um, and our buildings weren't being used. So, um, staff that left, we didn't necessarily refill positions, um, when kids weren't in our buildings. Um, and so, that, during that period, our fund balance uh, grew. And then, we've been continually in the last few years operating um, with a deficit, which then buys that back down. So it's not a, it, it just kind of ebbs and flows depending on other things that are happening as well. And obviously, no one could have predicted COVID. So, everything from that situation um, makes looking at trends a little bit difficult.
Thank you.
Okay, I have another question about um, if the budget does not get submitted to the state. Um, like, just say the budget committee doesn't pass, like, a budget to recommend to the board and it gets pushed into like, we have to have a session in July or August, like, what would happen?
I can't spend any money until there's an appropriation.
So we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to pay people, for example, is that what you mean?
Correct, we wouldn't be able to pay people, we wouldn't be able to pay Pacific Power, we wouldn't be able to pay anything. I cannot, cannot issue a payment um, without the authorization to do so from the board.
Okay, um, thank you, I think there's a misconception that, um, that we don't need to have an approved budget by a deadline. Yeah, thank you.
It's just the same i- as any other governmental organization.
Yeah, and I looked up the ORS on that earlier too and it looked like, pretty clear in there that it says that the funds don't get allocated without a budget presented to the state, and so I was confused. I just was um, wanting to help clarify that for the community that may be watching.
Yeah, I'm unsure, I'd have to check, I do know that if we don't have our audits completed um, by the deadline, which is always the first business day in January for the prior fiscal year, then the state withholds state school fund until we um, get that in. So that can be pretty significant for districts. Um, I am unsure, there's, there's districts that definitely do have that happen on an annual basis. Um, I am unsure if that, the same thing applies to um, the budget. What I do know is that technically, it's not like anyone takes over our bank accounts or anything. Um, but what happens is, is if I was to make a payment and allocate funds that weren't authorized for expenditures after July one, then that would become a finding in our next round of audits. And while the audit is a very technical process and document, um, when we do need money, when we do go out for bonds or refinancing or any of that, that's all looked at by the investors that are considering us. Um, and what they will see, I mean, if you've heard about um, like our bond rating, for example, when we went through that process, what you will see is that we become a liability, that they're not willing um, to purchase our bonds. Um, therefore, we kind of get in the stuck place and that's going to significantly impact our rating. I do not know of any districts where that has happened, at least not in the last ten-ish years. Um, I can tell you that there's several that got very, very close last year. And I mean, I think some, a few that adopted, you know, on June thirty, and we're having meetings every single day for weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have another kind of two-pronged question, going back to building off of what Bernie and Judah and Therese were saying. Hi, again, this is hypothetical, if we were for whatever reason to request that money be taken out of the contingency fund to fund something else. And then, next year, the amount we allocated, we were allocated from the state would bring the required number of dollars into the contingency fund down to what we just took out of it. So, let's say, you know, right now, we're having thirteen point three million dollars going into the contingency fund. And let's say we took out five hundred thousand, bringing us down to twelve point eight. And then next year, twelve point eight million dollars is the percentage of the revenue that is needed for, uh, to put in the contingency fund. Would we then still need to replenish it? And then, the second part of the question is, just to make sure that I'm clarified, if we do scrounge money from wherever and ask it to be put in, say, teacher salaries, uh, from what I'm understanding, per union contracts, there's no guarantee that it would go to whatever department we're hoping it would go to. Uh, it could be like, well, due to seniority that has to go to this math teacher and then this science teacher, is that more or less correct?
The second question is shorter to answer, so I'm gonna go backwards, the answer is yes to that, we, you can't direct the funds. Um, on the first question, so the budget committee themselves can um, increase the appropriation on the, on that line, on that six thousand line, but you're also gonna have to give me a revenue to match that or decrease an expenditure elsewhere. Because um, the budget committee themselves doesn't actually have the authority um, to approve that I, that we access the rainy day. You could make the recommendation that when the board sees it, um, that that's what you would like them to consider at that time. But the budget committee themselves doesn't um, have the authority to do that. So you would need to give me your corresponding revenue to balance the budget. Second of all, we don't even know what our state allocation is going to be for this year. So, based on the process, I could not, and Ryan could not reasonably come to you and tell you that that's our replenishment plan because we don't even have the information we need for next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, because we don't actually have an actual final budget, we don't actually know if we have enough money even for what you've proposed. We think we do, we hope based on what they've told us, that we do. But if what they come back with turns out to be different, then is that a situation in which we could say, oh, we're, it's October and our school year is underway now, so we need to use money from our contingent Oh, we're, it's October and our school year is underway now, so we need to use money from our contingency to continue out this year. Because we've already, because we're in the year. Um, is that, is that an example of a, of a potential correction to a budget where we would need that contingency? We could use that to keep the plan that you have made going.
Yes, you could consider that. I mean, it's based on the, um, an economic impact. There's language in there around the economic impact. So I would say, yes, the state giving us less money than they came out with. Um, could definitely be. Contributed to that. But what I would say is that's not necessarily, we would still want to request that of you. Um, and there's other options that we would consider as well. To re, to, to live within our means essentially, um, if that dollar amount changes.
Okay, thanks. I think mostly I just wanted to make sure that the community can hear that. We have the ability to say. We, we're gonna preserve a service in light of a budget reduction for this year. Because we feel better about preserving the service than we do about having a mid-year change. And that would be something that the district could decide. We have the, the, the board has the authority to say. Yes, that's something that we would approve.
I, yes. I also think it's important to keep in mind though that we're budgeted on a biennial basis from the state. So if we receive less money that we, than we planned for twenty four, twenty five. That also means that our assumptions for twenty five, twenty six are also too high. Because those two years are attached together in funding. So then again, I would go back to. Can we reasonably, within three years, refill that amount?
I have two questions. I'm also happy to do one at a time to give others a chance to come back. Lauren, thank you so much for all your responses so far. I wanted to build on what Lou was asking earlier in terms of just. The. The result of if, if a budget doesn't pass in a certain timeline and how harmful that could be in not being able to, to pay bills essentially and to pay people. Who we want to make sure. And also just want to acknowledge that this, this moment in time with the budget. Feels especially critical. Because this is the one time of year that the budget is so clearly and beautifully laid out. We know you have access and the board gets to see budget to actuals throughout the year as well. But for the community to be able to really see the budget is laid out in detail, to be able to go through line by line and. The pervasive belief, and I think I also hold this to some degree. Is that this is the one moment where if anyone has any say or any opportunity to make a change or to advocate for something. It feels like this is the only moment in time for that. And I also recognize that, given all that you've shared, the budget changes throughout the year. Continually, and that there are continual changes. And so I think that there is a. Trying to put my words together in a, a more eloquent way. But this, this tension between feeling like, and I think both on, on the board and for members of the budget community perhaps, as well as the community. But this is the one moment in time where things are set and determined right now versus throughout the year. Things can change. And things could either continue to be cut if we have a, the forecast goes down and the actual numbers go down. Um, but perhaps could also grow if they went up or there was a resurgence of funds or something came up. So I'm wondering with all of that in mind through that ramble. If you or Ryan or Melissa could give examples of how the budget changes over the year. Or what are things that people might see over the year that reflect? That this isn't just the one moment in time where all the decisions about the budget are made.
Yeah, there's lots of examples. Um, so again, going back to how the state school fund operates. It's student enrollment dependent, right? And so, um, say our student enrollment number comes in higher. And now we're paid on a different extended ADMW that is higher than what I have in my assumptions here. Um, we would assume that if we have more students than, since most of our staffing is, uh, ratio based. Then we would then increase staffing, um, as, as the need arises. We've done that several times this year. We've had classrooms where, or certain grades that there's like this bubble. That we weren't expecting based on prior enrollment trends. Um, and so we have deployed an additional, you know, point five FTE. Um, to s- take, you know, small, split that classroom into smaller groups for different periods of the day. Maybe for like lit instruction or math instruction. Um, that would be an example. Um, there's things that come up all year long, like I would, I'm not being dramatic when I say, um, sometimes on a daily basis. But for sure on a weekly basis where we're constantly considering. How, um, all the, the pieces are moving and how we can, um, support that. So. I mean, the, another tricky one is we have, um, this group of kinders that are coming in. And we don't know all the things about them. Um, and some of them, you know, have been receiving maybe early intervention services. And so they're kind of on this like. Little bit different of a transition pathway, but there's also kids that show up and we don't know what they need. Um, and so then when they arrive and we can assess what we, they need, then we provide those services. Um, another one, like, I mean, to maybe the I, IEP and five oh four example that we were talking about before. Is there maybe medical needs, like a student, um, either new medical needs or they have medical needs that need. Some sort of support, nursing or a delegation of a nurse. Um, an example there is that we have a lot of, um, diabetic students. That are at the, especially at the elementary level that are learning to self-manage. Um, but in order to keep them safe while they're learning that, there needs to be some delegation of support. So another adult who is trained in their specific needs. Um, and, and that is helping them do that with, you know, the goal that hopefully as they get older and maybe as they, um, have. They can have more autonomy over their own care. But there, those are some examples where. That's where we would change priority. Um, we also have, I mean, for example, as. Um, our team has done a really good job of building out the Bridges program. There's different needs, like as they're working through designing that curriculum. So. They need different maybe tools or spaces, like they're working on creating a garden. So what do we need to, to. To do that. And that's now connected with the curriculum. And so how do, how are we supporting? That not building, something breaks. I don't, like, there's so many things on a regular basis and we have to choose. What are we prioritizing? And making sure that, again, we're being responsible for long-term and serving the, the students we have in our building to the best of our ability.
Over the last, um, year and a half, we have, um, when a position becomes vacant. Um, we, um, principals make a request that we review. We decide if it's gonna be a temporary position for the remainder of the school year. If we're gonna post the position, if we can get by without the position. And those requests are reviewed on a weekly basis.
Thank you for those examples. So it sounds like a lot of the, the ways that budget. Does change throughout the year are based on need that comes up, based on staffing needs, EA support. Um, adi- additional support that comes in, but probably less likely in terms of a full program returning or shifts to major schedule. Things like that that.
Yeah, we, we would avoid doing anything that would be super disruptive, like after the school year already starts. So like, for example, we've had, um, schools that don't meet their, like their enrollment estimate. And maybe are significantly below, but those children have already been assigned to that classroom, have started to build relationships with those teachers. Um, and those teachers have been doing a whole bunch of planning in order to get ready for those kiddos. And so, um. Like completely wiping out a classroom would, in a school, would probably be pretty disruptive. To both staff and to kids. So it goes both ways. Like there's some times where we have to weigh, like, what's the. How is, how might that actually harm kids by doing something mid-year? Staff as well. I mean, I don't, I don't think probably any staff would love to hear, uh, you know, after they've spent all their time, uh, their two weeks prior to school. You know, prepping and they're all excited and have their classroom set up and say, oh, actually, like, we don't have enough kids that showed up for your grade. Now you're gonna go across town to another school and start over.
Thank you, appreciate that. Can I ask my second question or do you want to turn to others first, Andrew?
Let's let Tony go and then we can come back to you.
So a couple of questions back on page seventy-two, uh, six thousand and seven thousand. Uh, the, there's three years that aren't, aren't represented there. So, and I apologize if this has already been covered and I, I didn't catch it. So wondering where, where the information is on those three years. And then the second question is, for this year, the thirteen million, three hundred five thousand. Is, is that generated from board policy and you're just simply calculating or is that, was there a decision made that that's, that was the level?
Uh, so the three years were required to show three years of actuals. So we did not utilize the contingency or unappropriated ending fund balance, so those are zeros. Cause this is expenditures, right? So we had no expenditures booked in those categories. If you were to go back and look at the budget books, you would have seen the budgeted amount. But once it turns to actuals, you're only gonna see, um, something in there. If there was actual spend related to that category. So like you'll see for the current year, twenty four, twenty five, it's not over yet, so I can't say that we won't use it. I don't anticipate that we will. And hopefully I would anticipate that by this point of year. Um, but that's why you're not seeing it there. And you're, and yes, so the fun, remember that in this section you're looking at all funds. And really it's probably more accurate to look at general fund only. Um, because the policy is for general fund. And so that corresponding page for that. Would be on page one oh five and it's actually, uh, broken out into the two different categories. We split them apart. So and in the, in the year where you see the planned, um, reserve. Sometimes we do targeted reserves for something. Like it, for example, if we are, um, deep in a negotiation for contracts and we don't know. Like we don't feel like we're gonna settle by the time we need to adopt a budget, we might put an assumption there, but anything there would be explained.
Oh, Shauna, you can go ahead and ask your second one then. Oh, okay. Anybody else have? One while we're waiting, sure?
Yeah, I just, I have one, a small question, um, from the document that you shared this afternoon or this morning. But it's about, uh, the Bernie asked the question if, uh, and, you know, uh, if the rainy fund is, you know. To use for restoring the card program, the budget deficit would be exa- exacerbated by keeping this program. So, right? So I'm just ca- curious how serious, cause this, this situation could be. If we want to keep this cutting program.
So if we fund it, cause there's a bunch of different factors that go into that. But ultimately, we are very certain that our enrollment is going to keep declining based on the data that we have. So we know enrollment declines, we are going to receive less money. Like that's how the system works. Um, and so we know, again, that every year costs go up. And so if we, um, use those rainy day funds and to, uh, reinstate something. Then we know the next year, the cost of that something goes up quite a bit and our revenue is either going to stay the same. Um, or maybe go up a little bit. And what, then what we know is everything else happening, sorry. I don't know, I'm using my hand so much today. Um, everything else around, expenses around that are also increasing at the same time. So, and to bring it back again, is that this budget represents an increase from last year. Yet we are reducing more staff because the, the cost is going up exponentially quicker. Than the revenues. So that's how it becomes compounding because you're keeping something that you can afford. With the obligation of doing it again in the next year where you know that that cost will increase again in the next year. So it just becomes this multiplying factor.
Yeah, thank you. But I'm, um, I'm thinking, um, I'm not sure whether the committee members and the board members, you know. Actually, the city of Corvallis has built a affordable, affordable housing, um. And so for, you know, the people come, who the come, come to the city to live here, right? So also I think the OICU is, uh, building is AI center and it will be open, uh, in the near future. So I think both projects would bring more people, uh, in, um, you know, in the coalition and live here and choose public education for their kids. So whether, I'm just, I'm curious whether school district, uh, is considering this kind of positive change to the student enrollment.
Yes, so as a part of, um, our long-range facilities planning, which is happening outside of this committee. But, um, a part of that, we did, um, have a formal demographic study done. Um, and, and the information that we received from that is all taken into consideration. So we looked at, we, they pulled all. Of the permits that have been submitted to the city or the county within our boundaries. They looked at, um, as units have been being built. Uh, how many students are coming after those units are being built? So for example, when a single family is, it takes four single-family homes to bring in one student to the Corvallis School District. Um, is it five? Yeah, for multi-family, so the multi-family units. Which are largely what are being produced in Corvallis at this time. That takes five students or five units for one student to enter the system. So, and I would provide the example that the, um, the. Uh, multi-family housing that was, um, for, um. I don't know what the restrictions on it were exactly, but the multiple, multi-family housing that was done in Lincoln last year. Um, there was a lot of conversation about, well, your assumptions are too low for enrollment because we have these units going in right across the street from the district. And so that should bring in more kids. And just like we saw when big units went up, um, like the Withem Hill area. Like out in, by, in Bessie Coleman neighborhoods, that doesn't ring true. And we saw it happen again with Lincoln. So, yes, we have that information. Yes, we're considering that. And what the data is saying is that doesn't actually. Come to fruition. There's also this big gap between housing, um, that's low income. And the step right above that. And so that's an area too that hasn't really been addressed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, the new, the ribbon cutting, which I, there's that article in the Gazette, there was a hundred and sixty-four units at that new development. We could anticipate that there would be something like thirty-three students spread out across all age groups coming from that one development.
Yeah, that's what the data, um, has shown over the last three years of, um, residential development. And how many students, um, are actually living in those homes.
This is a question that I don't expect you to have the answer to, but has anyone compared the, um. Ratio of the number of units that bring in, the number of kids that come in per unit when the housing is low-income housing?
Yes, I have that information, not in my memory bank, but I have it, um, and can give it to you.
Well, and I guess I'm just gonna use this as a moment to plug and say that low-income housing will bring more youth. Because families tend to qualify for low-income housing. And so Corvallis hear this. We build low-income housing, we will get families. We will also be giving families quality housing, which is also a very good thing. And if they have quality housing, they will come into our classrooms potentially less need burdened. So there's no downside to building low-income housing in our community. There's only an upside. So can we please do that? Let's do that.
You ready for your next question, Shauna?
I am. And I had more information now, given some of the other questions that came in. I'll wait for Lauren though, I know she might be looking up.
Yeah, I was just looking at market rate versus income restricted. Um, and it is correct that we do, um, generate quite a bit more students from the income restricted. Um, than the market rate, which it's still pretty low though for being in the, um. Like in our, the kind of town that Corvallis is. It was interesting when talking with the demographers, is that our, um. Children generation rate that's tied to housing is much more comparable to cities like San Francisco. Um, Seattle, New York, because this is not necessarily, um. There's a lot of costs and other factors that are coming into it, but it, I'm not saying that Corvallis is not family-friendly. That's not what I'm trying to say, but they make it difficult for families to live here.
I would say it's not family welcoming, in my opinion, as a parent who can't buy shoes or socks for my child.
I, yes.
So, yeah. Or underwear. But, um, so. Or underwear, but um, so, oh, sorry.
I'm sure she appreciates that.
Sorry, I had to chime in there because that's it's a huge pet peeve of mine that families are not able to do these things and it. Signals who belongs in our city. I get really passionate about it, I have a question about um, cause there's been an ask about um. The budget impacts on classroom sizes and I didn't see in the budget document that. There were significant increases to classroom sizes because of the budget proposal, so I was wondering if you might did sharing anything about either you or Ryan.
Yes, so we did a different methodology for kindergarten or for elementary. So because what we know um is that the littles, especially ones that maybe haven't had any sort of. Coordinated um education um need a little bit more. A little lower adult to student ratio, um, and so we tried to kind of look at what the needs are of the age group and also. Looking at that in alignment with our board goals, right? And so we have a board goal of um third grade reading. So how are we going to? Make that happen and so we have different targets for different um groups, so kindergarten and first grade. Uh, twenty two students, second and third, twenty four and fourth and fifth, twenty seven. Um, which averages out when I actually take the full enrollment um to twenty four students. Um, per staff member and so that is the same as it is this year, it's just a different. Methodology and should um help our goal really from feedback from staff and principals. Is that blends are really hard um to teach and so we tried to take that feedback and figure out. How to better do it because we know that kids aren't a formula, right? But we have to have something. To to start our allocations from, so then we looked at like how that's actually playing out and so in some cases. That would have allocated an additional staff member because of that. Um, so that one's the same, middle school and high school are up one student from this current year.
Thank you.
And those periods, I would say too is that. We round elementary, like elementary has to have a full classroom teacher, right? You can't have like a point three classroom teacher. The classroom is all the time, um, and so for middle school and high school, we round to the closest period. So it's a little, it's a little bit different of a formula, but we round up to the closest periods, which means that. That will look a little bit different at that level.
Thank you, okay, I'm going back to a contingency question now that I had time to just. Rerun some numbers in reminding myself and thank you for the reminder that. The reserves really come out of the general fund or are calculated as a percentage of the general funds. So it looks like on page, I have page seventy two and one oh five open so that I'm comparing that contingencies line. Both relative to the general fund where contingencies. Under planned reserve does that seven point three six nine million. And on seventy two, when we look at it relative to the. To all funds, there's a larger number there in contingencies. I know you've talked about in the past having some additional fu- or thinking about funds. In case there's a change in federal dollars, for instance, is that where those dollars are?
No.
What what is reflected in that difference? Cause it looks like a four point six million dollar difference.
So we have two major debts, we have our purse debt and we have our bond obligation, so. I definitely don't want to get down to a zero dollar in those funds every year, so. We budget our expense in those funds, which you'll see within the three hundreds um. The three hundreds are for debt service and that starts on page one thirty three. So you'll see that the expenditures are what actually matches within our debt schedule. Um, and we have a fund balance that we carry forward every year. Um, and so that amount then becomes the reserve in those funds, I cannot access that for anything else. Um, in addition, we operate internal services funds, which are in the six hundreds, which should be. Little bit down the road after that, um, and so within those two, there's two major funds, which is the. Classified insurance reserve fund and the certified insurance reserve fund and so we commit to our two. Um, union groups to pay a certain dollar amount every month. Per employee, you know, maybe pro- some are prorated, some are scale, different things, but. So that amount of money we take from wherever that staff is funded and we put it into their fund every single month as a automated process of our payroll. Um, and so those dollars sit there and then. The two union groups have the authority um to decide how to use those related to employee benefits every year. So like this point in the year, I'm talking with the insurance committees to decide. What do they want to do with their additional dollars? Again, those are their dollars that we've agreed to in contract. And I'm holding it and it's sitting over there.
So that's, those are sitting in the contingency line?
In all funds, that's why I wanted to point you to actual general fund because it's not.
Got it.
As much as represented in the all funds and the three hundreds and six hundreds are extremely restricted.
Okay, thank you, that helps, cause I. Just looking in terms of are there funds at different places that.
Yeah.
You know, are above and beyond the reserve that actually can in some way be tapped into and it sounds like those really are restricted. Those are actually very specific funds and so they're appearing in that line, but they are not a reserve that we would have access to.
Correct, it also inflates on the revenue side, the beginning fund balance that we're projecting for the um. Year forward, so if you're looking at the all funds page, that's gonna look different and higher than the other.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, I mean, with those funds, those represent about forty million dollars. So they're not, it's not a small amount um in those funds and so. Yes, it does make the all funds look a bit inflated, but it is a large amount um that we are committed to every year.
Sammy?
Generally speaking, whether investments from this year or years past. What could have contributed to the increase from about thirty eight percent of reading, third grade reading to fifty percent? Was like double digit jump. And could you describe those investments and are those investments continuing? Where we may see continued uh recovery in third grade reading?
So a couple of things that we've been doing is that um we have been. Providing our supporting teachers who've gone through professional development around the science of reading. Lauren's made it an adjustment around class size for K three for the upcoming year. We have had a curriculum that's been in place for a while, but was strongly supported with good professional development. When I visit schools, I see them looking at um student data um intently and making decisions day in and day out about. What supports kids need, um, the, some of our intervention materials come from the same curriculum, so there's better alignment. Um, when I was a special education teacher, there was not always that alignment in supporting kids' development and reading um in such. Kind of that clear way, so I think there's a lot of different things that are going on. Um, we're also further from the pandemic, um, and that's a significant piece of this as well. But we are um seeing unmarked improvements and I'm feeling positive about those. And wanting to continue to do what we can to see those continue to improve.
Thank you. Lauren, I I know you put lots of work on the documents, especially. Uh, answered so many questions between last week and this week. And I wanna be mindful of everybody's time, usually we would read the reports, we would read and we're ready to deliberate. I would like to ask you maybe if you can go for the record and for the community to really. Have an idea of the breadth of topics that we're discussed, if you can just highlight what was asked. Uh, on a very high level from the document, I really would appreciate that for the community members. Who may have asked actually questions of us or thinking, are we considering those things?
Sure, um, just of note, the document is posted on um the agenda for today, so it's linked there. Um, you can read all of the questions and who asked it from um the budget committee, questions that were asked. Offline, so I'm I'm taking in emails throughout the week, um, and so that's all represented here, I've also incorporated the questions, maybe a little. Different wording exactly um in the uh budget FAQ document as well. And that is posted on our website, I would say. Um, there was questions about the reserve, um, how the committees roll. Uh, how are we supporting students um on IEPs and five oh fours? Um, are how the budgeting dollars work um being a part of the ESD? Let's see. Budget assumptions. State revenue forecast challenges and what that might impact. How like federal, I mean, the state and federal, I guess, impacts. Different questions about employee groups. Substitutes. Um, and how we come to contract agreements, so again, all of that is posted online and you can read the detailed responses.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with that and let folk know that that's like a five and a half page document. Um, single space, so if it seems like the budget committee is just not asking a lot of questions, we are asking a lot of questions. Both here in the meetings and that's not why we're continuing to ask questions, we're trying to determine what's going on as well. But there's also a lot of questions I get asked outside of the meeting with Lauren and. I appreciate how detailed your answers are in there and I just wanted to say that. Um, and I did wanna highlight that question about the um. The relationship with the ESD because that's been a question that came up. Supporting special education, so I really encourage folk. Who don't know how that works to look at it at the document because. Um, it has some pretty detailed information of what is covered in that relationship with the ESD. And that those are, that's what determines. The staff allocation from them through our service level with them, not because. The district decides a certain amount of staff from the ESD. And so, so I just really wanted to point that out really quick, cause it is, it was a question of. That has come up um from community about like how our budget supports. Um, special education, both IEPs and five oh four forms, so our five oh four plan, so. Um, my other question, cause that was on my list too. Is um, if you don't mind Lauren chatting about for a moment, that'd be helpful. To know, I I don't know if we asked you where you redirected funds from in the budget, be like in other areas. And preparing it um and in consultation with. The admin at the schools and everything like that that you all do. Um, before looking at staff reductions, like what are some of the other areas that got reallocated that we didn't see ahead of time perhaps?
Well, the very first thing we do is do our enrollment projection, which um starts, that process starts really in like October. So I'm gonna do it again here soon, um, but we start with that and then we look at our ratios. For our classroom sizes and generally the first step we do is just bring forth, what do we have in the current year? Um, and then in a declining enrollment situation, that's automatically, we have less staff. Um, because we have less kids for classroom teachers, so that's the first step. Um, and that's really. We didn't do a whole lot in addition to that, we did a ton last year that was really significant, I think last year. And I hope I said, I think I said this a lot, but sometimes I'm unsure that I think last year was our right sizing. We have to adjust, I showed a lot of um. Uh, graphs of how our staffing has changed over the last ten years as well as how our student enrollment has changed. Our staffing has increased again a lot and not in through the same degree as that our students, so our students are going down and we were hiring more staff. Not to say that the new needs of students hasn't changed. Um, but we had to realign those two things, especially as we were uh spending out the rest of the um. S R relief dollars related to COVID, so after we adjusted staffing. Um, the other only change was the music change, which we've talked about. Um, and so that was uh fifteen minutes less uh per class per week at elementary. Um, at the middle school. Let me see, put some notes here on that, um, at the middle school, we are reducing one section of music across both. And that's like one period of music across both, um. Actually, sorry, two sections across both schools. Um, but we also are expecting about a hundred less middle school students, so the actual access to. The music classes doesn't change at the middle school based on that, um, at the high school, there's no reductions in music. So those were the only things, um, we looked at. Things we don't wanna do anymore because it doesn't. Um, we don't feel like it's working based on reviewing the data, more like software things or how could we? Be more efficient in certain areas, but we didn't really. Have to do a lot after we continue to align our our student enrollment and our classroom staff. I mean, we considered everything, but after we we did that, we didn't want to cut further than we had to.
Okay, thank you, um, I think it's helpful to know like that there was a lot of places looked at, even like something like. When you said software, like that wasn't the first thing I thought of because of how reliant we are on tech. So even something where I think that would seem like would be super necessary. Maybe it's not and I appreciate that you looked at all of those spaces.
Yes, so just uh to again, to go back to process is we're working with, we call them levels, so elementary, middle and high. So we're working with those principals who are working with their staff. Um, and then they're kind of looking at each one of their levels, cause they're very different in how they operate, so they're looking at things there and then. I don't think we've really talked a lot about of how that works on the department side, so then um all of the department leaders then are. Give them an amount and they have to make their budget fit within that dollar amount and so they're going through and just. As a software example, um, because technology is so prevalent. Um, and it's easy to have a lot of duplicative things. Like the two different platforms that do the exact same thing, um, or maybe one that doesn't, we're paying for it, but. It works okay, but there's actually this better option, so we're gonna stop doing that because we're actually getting more value out of this thing. And so as they're going through their budgets, they um have to evaluate all of those things, I generally. I think, I'm trying to think, I met with every single one of our department leaders to to talk through their ideas of what they had for their budget. Um, so that all is being considered on that end as well, we don't do. Um, what they call a zero base budget, which is basically you just have. As much money as you want, you start at zero and you put in whatever you want. Um, we are budgeting from here's your allocation, fit within this, um, and if you can't, we'll talk. So with meeting all of our different requirements that we have. This happens over months of time, so I know this seems like a short process, but really. I'm going to, I'm going to be monitoring this budget starting in August-ish, once we have the final. Um, staffing and all of that, like I start monitoring this pretty heavily and then. Then in two months later, I start working on the next and then two months after that. We are auditing the year that we're currently in, so we're never, we're never not working on it.
Thank you, I think that's helpful to clarify that it's not just like a three meeting process, that it's in consultation. With um level leaders in the schools and in consultation with teachers and staff and. Maybe not every single person is talked to in every single building. But it sounds like there's a lot of conversations happening that even the budget committee doesn't know about, so I appreciate you clarifying that.
And I, and I'm not doing all of that myself, so for example, like I will go to each one of the levels and have this sort of like. Centering conversation and getting them to start thinking about that because you have to remember, like our administrators are. Dealing, this is like one piece of the puzzle that they do, right? And so they're dealing with a bunch of other things that probably feel more urgent at the time. And so we kind of have that conversation of like, okay, it's time to. Circle back to this and we are talking about planning, here's some parameters, here's some loose assumptions and then. From that, our levels coordinators probably for several months. Um, are talking about budget and decisions for next year, so they're, they take that torch and they come back to me when they need me. And we're constantly doing that, so it's not um. It's not all me and it's not all just like one and done, it's constantly involving.
Lauren, just wanna say with the, what you just described as a process, you contrasted it with the zero budgeting. The process you're mentioning, is it what is highlighted in page six in terms of smarter school spending? And the framework uh around best practices that government finance officers association recommend. Uh, about uh this collaborative centered on comprehensive budget process, is that the framework that's you're observing? And do you wanna add anything about that?
Well, I think in practice, it's, it looks a lot messier than that, um, there's a lot of different drafts and um iterations of a of a plan. Um, but yes, this is what is is guiding that work. Um, and I, I mean, I just wanna make it really clear that in my my expertise, I don't know what is best for kids. Um, and I, I mean, I just want to make it really clear that in my, my expertise, I don't know what is best for kids. I can put myself in a parent's shoes um, and look at it from that model, but I rely heavily. On the student growth and experience team and our principals, um, who they are experts in that. And they've all been boots on the ground, working in classrooms, working with kids and, and so. I can't make decisions on instruction because I'm not an expert in that area. So I take what they say. And translate that in two dollars and we go back and forth and figure out how we can make things work.
Uh, thank you, Lauren. Uh, so um, that, um, I'm on page seventy-three of the report. Yes, still the question about the fiscal services is left here, uh, twenty-five, twenty. Uh, yeah, so here we see this, uh, this account increases um, fourteen percent next year. So I'm just wondering, is that's good district uh, expected to, to be exposed to high risks? Because from this number, this number is way high, you know, we hear that the C P I and other increase in index. But why do we have such higher number for this one?
Yeah. So again, this is an all funds page and I would encourage you to find the corresponding line in the general fund. Because that is more tied to actual operations of the district. Why you see that line increase quite a bit is because what we know to be true is from our insurance agent is we can expect at least a twenty percent increase. For um, our property casualty liability insurance. So that's a lot of money. Um, we also know our health insurance premiums go up every year. And again, we're paying about twenty thousand dollars per employee for health insurance. So that number also is going up pretty exponentially. Um, and if for some wild reason you are following what's happening with um, Oregon Employee Benefits Board. Um, this renewal has been extremely rough, um, and costs are increasing a lot. Um, with less planned benefits for employees. So. Which, that's our health insurance um, consortium of sorts. Um, and so that is what that is related to. Um, but again, if you check the general fund amount, there's the variances just very in alignment with. Um, staffing costs. I actually think I, that's my budget, my, so I do this for the whole thing. And then I do my own budget for fiscal services. Um, and I think when I budgeted everything out, there was like forty or sixty thousand dollars. That I was like, I don't, I don't need this. So I just put it back into the general pot for someone who does. Um, and so it's actually a reduction, but you have to remember staffing costs, all of that went up so that it is going to be an increase.
Okay, thank you. And I have one, another question. So um, so for the um, account twenty-five, fourteen. I see, and this account actually was paused due to the budget constraint of this year, right? So, uh, so I'm wondering if there are any uh, progress that had, that have to be paused due to um, the school district deficit. Problem next year. I'm just wondering if there is such a problem, uh, not a program.
Um, I would say, so this year we've pretty much um, halted any project that isn't. Um, reactionary, right? Like if a pipe bursts, we're, we're gonna fix it. Um, but we are not doing any like deferred maintenance or planned things. Um, and so that has been, that's a hard decision to make. Because we just, the community just invested a lot of money in new schools. Um, and so not taking care of them is not being a great uh, steward of that investment. So that's not a long-term plan. But last year, the reductions were deep. Um, and we made the decision to try to keep that from the classroom as far as possible. So in the departments, we cut. Um, over twice as much as what we, what we had to do um, in the schools and that was intentional. We can't continue that. Um, so I would say while there's an increase in that spending, it doesn't cover all of the projects. Um, that are on the list. So the facilities team has to assess all of those and look at. Really what is the best value, um, what can we wait on, what other potential funding sources may we have? Um, down the road that we could address that thing with. Um, also costs are really volatile. Um, in that market as well. So, so it wasn't necessarily beneficial for us to do a bunch of. Um, construction-related things last year, or this year, which in my mind is already last year, so sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Shauna?
Thank you. So I just wanted to give a nod to Molly who came last week and spoke to the board. Um, Molly who shared that she was in the Bessie Coleman musical tonight. So just to say break a leg to Molly. Sorry that we can't be there since we're here tonight and to other students at Bessie Coleman. Um, but wanted to then bring up what she had brought up because that actually is one of the biggest things that I've been hearing from the community is questions around music. Um, the two biggest, I think, sets of questions that have come to me through email or just through community conversations or stops at the dog park. Have been around staffing, which you've talked about in terms of staffing is something that does change throughout the year. Especially as numbers change, as enrollment changes either for up or down, that there are, are shifts and changes there. Um, one community member asked, and I, I know this is in the budget document, but just thought I would ask out loud too. About what it would take to maintain music F T E at the current levels. So I just wanted to pose that. I know the answer, but just wanted to pose it so it's shared with the community too.
Um, there's a dollar amount associated with that, but I just want to be clear that like we talked about last meeting. That there are other considerations that go into that um, decision. So it'll, it would cost around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, to reinstate that, the minutes and the F T E.
Thank you. And I, can I keep going a little bit or Teresa? If, if, if you have a question based on that, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just, can you clarify the minutes and the F T E? Can you break that down between the, the change in the, the sixty minutes to forty-five minutes versus the reduction based on the enrollment expectations at the middle school? Is that five hundred and fifty thousand covering all of that?
Elementary through high.
Okay, so then what do you anticipate would be the cost of putting the fifteen minutes of elementary instruction time back?
That one is um, uh, over four hundred thousand.
To do that one piece for, so the elementary school change represents the majority of the.
Correct.
Budget. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And why there was staffing changes um, that I think are being perceived as reductions in, in offerings for music. Is because of contract language. Um, and there's a lot of bumping that happens. Um, I don't know if that's a technical term, but that's one we use, bumping.
Is it okay if I share a little bit more?
Yes.
Um, so I want to also recognize that I know that we as, as a board in general, as well as the budget committee, don't have purview over. Which programs um, are funded or how we move funding. But I just did want to bring up concern because I know that this also links into some of the board goals. And we have newer board goals this year that we're all looking at how to align with budget. What does this mean? What does this mean as a district? And um, this is an area for me, I know that's, that's very personal. You know, I was a student in Corvallis Public Schools, K through twelve. I was in choir, orchestra and band, growing up in different ways, participating in those programs and have seen profound impacts. I went on to be a music major actually, um, and have at various times used those skills both for fun and joy and still do. And, and to pay the bills at times when I was a music teacher in between other jobs or working at um, local art centers. And, and continue to volunteer in the school music program as well as in the community in music. And I know that we've named in our goals under relevant engaging learning, creating and sustaining strong career technical music and arts education. So I want to name arts as part of that too, theater as well as other arts. And then thinking about healthy communities and supporting staff well-being and retention efforts. And so it's really, as I've been thinking about this and I know. Just given my role as a volunteer in the music programs, I tend to get a lot of connection with music educators. Um, the impact I'm hearing on them, you know, that fifteen minute change on paper isn't a lot. But for children to have two days of music versus one is a really big difference. And it impacts classroom teachers as well as those music educators who now are learning six or seven hundred children's names. Rather than three hundred, being those teachers who are consistent throughout the time the students are in school. Um, so also just want to give a nod to them and how important their roles are and how meaningful the work is that they do. So that's something that's just sat with me in terms of recognizing this is an area that could be a potential strength in our district. Is really thinking about what does, longer term, what does a strong music and arts education look like? Guided by music educators and determining that. And I think right now it's written in our goals. And the strength of that plan being in place with input from educators hasn't been developed. Um, so I think for me, it's just a moment to pause and reflect on. You know, I know a lot of things will, will shape out over the year in terms of staffing and staffing shifts. But when we have specials programs, if there's only one point in time in year where those decisions are being made, it feels especially critical to, to call those out. And again, I'll just name that I know that that's not our purview to name which programs need to be funded. But just want to bring that up as, as something that I think connects with the board goals. And is something that also draws families and has the potential to draw families to the program. And last thing I'll say is I was at a conference recently on child development. I was not going looking for all the music education. But loved seeing how much was coming out actually across the country. And there was a poster right next to a poster that a student of mine was presenting. That had looked at participation in music education for high school students. And found that participating in more than one music program or just one or more than one, actually had a bigger impact on reducing suspension. Reducing conduct problems, increasing attendance and increasing graduation rates. So that was pretty stunning in terms of data also standing behind it, so.
I think it's, um, through this process, it's really easy and sometimes I have to do that internally just to like center myself to have this conversation. Because it is personal to me too. Um, it, it's really technical and I hope that it hasn't come off. That I don't think that, you know, that we're not valuing and that fifteen minutes is just a, a little amount of time. Um, that's not how I'm trying to portray that. I mean, I'm not suggest, I'm not saying that you are suggesting that. But I just want to make it clear to our staff, like that we do value you and appreciate you and this is all really hard. Um, and I think for the teachers that teach in those specials, they kind of get pulled out and um. Are the subject of more conversations and that's hard to balance too through this whole process. So just, I kind of seconded what you say in recognizing those staff. Um, yeah, this, it's been hard.
Yeah, thanks Lauren. And I definitely wasn't directing, I know a lot of questions get directed at you and I'm looking right at you. And recognize it as more of a district effort of something that really for long-term sustainability um, is important.
Yes.
I just wanted to add on to what Shauna's saying, not just our board goals, but um, our levy. Um, local option levy promises and um, last year I talked a lot about like how important art is too. And like music is a form of art too. There's all like in the creative arts realm in my mind and um. And I'm hoping that we're still honoring our levy promise. And so I had a question about that. I don't know if you want to answer that, Ryan or Lauren does. Like how we're meeting those expectations of the promises. That's why I asked about the classroom size too, because that was also, that's in the levy promise. Um, as well. And so this is the other part, so maybe.
The levy only funds about half of those things, the half of the cost of those things. Um, and so, yes, without it, that would look very different. Um, but the fact that the levy doesn't fully support it, I believe that we're, we are still meeting our promise to the community. It does look different and that's hard. Um, and thinking through like Shauna's suggestion of how can we figure out? How to do all of the things um, in a meaningful way. Like that's something that we are, I think, all committed to working on. Um, but I do, I do believe that and I want to come back to like the, some of the reasoning behind that. That we talked about and Ryan put it in a way that was better to, um, explanation than I have been able to give so far. But we have six and a half hours per day with elementary kids. And so every time we are pulling them out of the classroom, they're getting less um, math and literacy, literacy instruction. And so um, in this new plan, while music is a loss for sure, not having. I, I think I hear that the problem maybe that we didn't consider is more about the repetition versus the actual minutes. And like the amount of times they have it per week. So that's feedback that we can use. Um, but with that trade-off, we are. Um, students will be receiving a hundred and twenty minutes, I think it is. Um, of language arts every day and eighty minutes of math instruction every day. Which then goes to support a different board goal. So. I think that's important to include in the conversation that we are still, I think, honoring the intent of the levy. And we are also still honoring and working towards our board goals.
I think it's really hard to balance all the goals at one time because on the other hand, we have a lot of feedback from the community. Um, about our reading and math levels, which I will say once again, have gone up. And that still need to go up, but they have been going up and I appreciate that um, as the trend. Um, but there, there's almost like competing asks from the community on what should be prioritized. And I think that really needs to be said out loud because it hasn't been, that there's, there is competing asks from the community. Whether it's around the arts, around music, math, reading and a budget. It's hard to balance all those through a budget because that work actually happens in the schools. And I just wanted to say, I think the teachers are doing an incredible job given the circumstances. And helping us move the dial upward from the impact of the pandemic. Um, and I don't know how a budget can answer all of those questions. And other than we're showing where the funding is going allocated. And Ryan, you already said something about um, some of the shifts in reading and how this is aligning. Lauren, you said that with that part. So I just wanted to name that for the community that part about the, all the asks. Teresa?
Yeah, so thank you for the information about the cost if we were to restore the elementary education. I think it's hard to conceptualize. Um, you know, the fifteen minutes doesn't feel like it should cost that much money and yet, you know, fifteen minutes over. Seven elementary schools, over five days, you know, over what, over the entire school year, in staff time. I, I see and I appreciate you breaking it down that way. Something that I've been hearing from the community, which I think is very much in alignment with what Shauna and Lou have already commented on. Um, around music is um. Um, I think is the, is the feeling that um, we are undervaluing the capacity for music. And art classes to strengthen literacy and math. And what I didn't hear in the conversation and what I'm really hoping to hear in the coming year is a more intentionality. And creativity around cultivating how math and liter, and literacy can be supported by um, music and, and art. Rather than creating a false dichotomy of a competition between them. Because I think that there is not a competition. If we deliberately design and implement a curriculum that brings those together and in a synergistic way. I think we can see that music and art will help us get better literacy and math outcomes. And I didn't hear that part of the conversation. I, I heard we need time in this subject and I heard that the, the block scheduling becomes challenging. Um, what I, what I'm really hoping to hear going forward as, and inviting community to come in and talk about is how are we gonna raise the bar on what we think is. Um, the floor, or how are we gonna raise the floor on what we think is essential for music and art? Because we, I don't think we're treating them as core subjects, but they're experienced by kids as core subjects. And so that does feel like a miss between what we talk about within the district and what the community is experiencing. And I do think it's an important thing for us to work on, on closing. I also felt like there was some misalignment between. What was presented around how the building leadership talks about scheduling and what the teachers that reached out to us said about what they feel their kids' needs are. Or even what their own staff needs are. And I think that, that even if, it just, maybe it's just a perception. Maybe, you know, this is a, a handful of people choosing to be vocal and so it may be that actually there's much greater alignment. If there is greater alignment, we need to elevate that. But if there isn't greater alignment, then I think that needs to become a priority. How do the building leadership and the classroom teachers, um, and then the rest of the building staff a, as well? How do they get on the same page about the role of scheduling and um. Uh, because I didn't, I did not hear agreement in that area. And, and I think that's really an important growth opportunity for us.
I know that principals have been working um, even this week to start to build those schedules for next year, realizing they have that additional um, opportunity within the day. The other thing that I think um, we are making reductions. And we are still maintaining that kids are gonna have library once a week, they're gonna have music once a week, they're gonna have art once a. they're going to have art once a week, and they're going to have PE twice a week. So they're going to have those specials every day. And I know that we're in a place where that conversation is difficult. And I also want to recognize that we're working really hard to make sure that our kids have that well-rounded education. As we made decisions around FTE and time with our music teachers, I recognize that they're in a different situation, because there's lots of first grade teachers, or lots of primary teachers, but there's not that many music teachers as you start to make reductions. And so, we worked really hard to make sure that those folks weren't covering three buildings. We were limiting it to two, even if it meant we had to bump in a little bit more time. So we're trying to be really intentional about all those things. And at the same time, those, there are still difficult decisions and hard conversations to have with folks.
I'm just going to jump on to Teresa and Shawna, since we have so little opportunity to share. I was doing some more independent research, and also about how this is impacting students with disabilities and how things like choir and in band, that the students are co-regulating with each other, and that it's also a behavioral support. And in that way, caring for our students' emotional well-being is critical, and that we're taking this away from elementary school students, this time to co-regulate and to, to have space emotionally, which is what art and music does. And, you know, sitting in a place where it's like, if I, as a board member, had the power to put that fifteen minutes back in, I would have, you know, I would have done it. Because it was, I also remember my time as, as a tiny little person, and I still today play a musical instrument quite poorly. That is something that I started in elementary school. And I want to, to make it clear that I would like to see this treated as this is a core need, that is, that art and music are one of the few places where so many important things for these kids coalesce. And it's not an extra.
Does anybody have any more questions for staff?
I just want, we've had a lot of conversation, and I just wanted to reiterate that the Budget Committee cannot restore positions. And I think that's really important, no matter what we reallocate, we cannot restore programs or positions. And that's really hard, as you've heard from us. Like, it's not that we don't care about these positions or the people, because they're not just positions. They're part of our community, they're family members, and they're parents, too. And so, it's, that's not what it is. And I feel like sometimes it comes across that way, that we're just sitting here like, talking about people's lives very casually, when that's not the case. And I did have a question attached to this statement, don't worry. And it has to do with the several emails that we received about line item six thousand, the contingency fund. I wanted to go back to that and just triple-check that the Budget Committee cannot request funds out of that themselves, correct?
You can change the budget line item, but that doesn't give me the authority to use it, because only the board can give me the authority to use that.
Yeah. And that would also not guarantee we would restore any of the positions we just talked about, correct?
Correct.
Also, I'm sorry, may, may I, I really need to, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask if you could clarify what you mean when you say change the line item?
So you can increase the appropriation here, but what the Budget Committee would need to do would also be to increase a corresponding revenue line that equates to that same amount that changes my operating revenues. And so, then, that, that doesn't mean necessarily that you impact the policy. So I would still have to follow the policy, so therefore I'd have to meet the guidelines of the policy, unless the board gave me the authority to do differently.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was really clear for the community listening, too.
So just to summarize, we could go for a motion, but the suggestions we heard is half of the proposal, the other half is taking the money from somewhere else, correct?
The way that it was presented in the email that Lou's talking about, talks about a, two different expenditure lines. So that doesn't work in a balanced budget, so therefore I would need an increase on an expenditure line and a revenue line.
Thank you. And the other element of it is tapping into our reserves, we just talked about extensively, for one, for our continued revenue, is exacerbate the problem and puts the entire district at more vulnerability of honoring its commitments, correct?
That is my strong opinion, yes.
Thank you.
We talked about this extensively last year, and I just wanted to let the community know that, related to the art positions. And so I kind of feel a little bit conflicted about requesting we use this for staffing, not that we can anyways, because it's against our policy, when we did not do the same thing for art staff. And, and so it makes it really hard, too, to think about that and how, and that it's not in the budget. And so I'm just like, I just want people to understand, like, that this is not an easy conversation at all. It's very uncomfortable, and there's a lot of reasons why it's uncomfortable. And, and looking, I have the email, one of the emails, because they're all copies of the same email. But that is requesting to move three million from line item six thousand and restore one, two, three, four, four different instructional areas. I'm, I'm stuck on that part where that does not ensure that any of these are going to be restored. And so that's where I wanted to make sure, don't worry, it's being used to live, too. But, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you for naming that, too, Lou, and I was thinking about that, too, in terms of, you know, calling out or just naming the importance of music and music education and music educators that, recognizing that as we also talk about, any shifts comes with reductions which could also come from other staff. And so, realizing and recognizing that there are a lot of important things and a lot of important people reflected in this. So appreciate you naming that.
Chris?
So just curious, what would you suggest to community members who have spent a lot of time trying to shift the thinking here in kind of a strong-armed way? What would be another suggestion of how we can improve budgets? Like, what's another idea? Like, state level? National level? Like, where could they focus?
I don't necessarily want to say that I would completely shift the focus from local. I don't think the methodology of being super combative and personally targeting employees is probably the best approach to get your point across. But we could work in a more collaborative approach, for sure, and talk and learn about more things. I think, I mean, myself personally, things that you talked about, and I think you talked about as well, is like the, the research and the data around, like, how does that, the music instruction tie in? That's not something I'm very familiar with, so I'm, like, want to learn more about that. How we can engage community in different ways, so that people are feeling like their voices are, are heard throughout the year versus not. I've actually, people who have personally emailed me about, community that have personally emailed me about the budget process, I have asked them all for ideas of how the engagement would go better next year, because I, I tried some things this year and got, apparently that wasn't the right thing to do. So I have not had anybody respond to that and give me actual suggestions, mostly just talking about what we shouldn't do. So I think there's just a lot more productive ways that we can handle this at the local level. I think, as we've mentioned, housing is super important in our community. So that makes a big impact to the families coming here and wanting to live here. Like Lou said, it's not just necessarily housing, but the infrastructure around us that supports families. And so, I think there's opportunities for conversations at the city and county level, which are conversations that we are also engaging. And I think there's a perception that we're asking community to go elsewhere and, and that we're not doing anything and engaging in those conversations, and we are constantly. There's also opportunities at the state level. I mean, at this point, I do think it's probably a little late. I think today was the deadline for the passing the Second Chamber. Is that correct? So, most things that are going to happen are either moving forward or, or not. So I'm not sure that there's a bunch that can be changed in the short term, but I think continued conversations with the people that are representing you at the Capitol doesn't hurt. I don't have any suggestions for how that may work at the federal level, that's its own beast at this point. But I think continually speaking to things that are important. I mean, there was a federal vote that happened two days ago. I think that severely decreased SNAP benefits and Medicaid. And so those are things that now impact us. And, and so, making sure that people understand that that is important. And at the end of the day, I think sometimes we have people who are pretty vocal about that we should just stick to educating kids. And we can educate kids if they don't have their basic needs met. That's, I think, a longstanding piece of data. So we have, we are supporting the whole child so that they can learn. And so if we're not, we're not able to provide those medical services that we're providing, or providing food at lower costs or free to our kids, like, there's a trade-off there, and all of those things come into play. So I think continuing to have productive conversations that are solution-oriented is what I would suggest the most at our local level. I'm not, I, I don't want to send people away from having a conversation with the people here.
So, I just want to add a couple of pieces to what Lauren shared. First, appreciation of Lauren. This is her second year in this position. And I hope she wants to continue to, to be in it, frankly. And I think that we have really tried this year. We had a community forum that was full of people to talk about budget and talk about what, what challenges we face as a community. And then we get into this time of year, and we lose sight of that. I also know that Lauren, and I had this conversation about opening up that survey, where people could ask whatever they wanted to. And we thought long and hard about it, because that's, that's going out there on a limb. And we still decided that we should do it. And we started to, as answers or questions started to come in, we started to think about answers right, right away. So we have tried to make this more transparent in, in ways that we haven't in the past, because we have received that critique year over year. And so we will continue to work on how do we better communicate and provide opportunities as we move into next year. That, that is the, a part of a continuous cycle of learning and trying to continue to do better. But at the end of the day, Lauren has done more of that than we've seen in any budget process over the last decade. And I appreciate the fact that you did that.
Tony?
So, I want to express some gratitude for, for this process, being a second year as a community member on, on the committee. Committee Chair Feaborg, I promise there'll be a question at, at the end of this, okay? It'll probably be rhetorical, and it might, it might address what Chris was talking about, as far as what, what would he do, as far as money. But, but I do want to say thank you to Lauren and the incredible work you've done. I, I, I think Superintendent Nos is pretty, pretty fortunate to have, greatly fortunate to have you. But I also, Board Chair Whitebeard, I appreciate the, the questions that you asked, because they were ways to communicate back to the community, the things that you heard. And I think the things that are still resonant out there. My, my earlier question about how do we get to that thirteen point three million on line item six thousand? Because my hunch is, the community that says we should have moved that money, they know today, from, from your work, that it wasn't, it can't happen here. And they'll probably come back to the, to the school board and say, fix that for future years. And they'll still probably be unhappy with Superintendent Nos with not doing that earlier, because the music is that important for people. So, so, a couple of comments, and I'll probably end up talking out of both sides of my mouth. But, but I, I hope the school board knows, and for the community. I, I did work as an administrator in the district office for a time, and the average length of a superintendent is around three years. And so, this community and this district is really fortunate that Superintendent Nos has been around for nine, and hopefully for a few more. Those that disagree with some of your moves probably aren't going to agree with that. But, but the stability that this district has, that, that both bargaining units are, are taken care of. The, the class role, the, the student-teacher ratio are, are, are super powerful things. This district will continue to be able to recruit good teachers and good educators. But, out of the other side of my mouth, I, I do need to say I appreciate disturbers in the community. And I, I think our democracy requires us to have those. I, I really do grieve the political partisanship that's come about in the last few school boards, that, that there's partisan politics is, is dangerous, I think. And, and, but I think this community and this board's position to, to be able to deal with that i- in a healthy way, and hopefully not lose Lauren in the, in the meantime. But, but I, I do think, one of the things that didn't get brought up tonight, that, I'll, I'll beat that drum again, is, are we really doing enough to find out why we don't have all of our kids in our schools? That, that's been another one that's been talked about quite a bit in the community, is our declining enrollment as it relates to kids that live in town that aren't there. And so, so my rhetorical question, I, I don't think it needs to be answered, it should be answered in the next year or two, is what will we do to engage, find out why that's happening, and how to reconnect? And, and I'd probably sandwich that with, you, you do have the staff in this building, and, and haven't, haven't been at Corvallis High for a week substituting. You, you got incredible staff that got great ideas on how to, if you do closed schools, how to do that, but also expand offerings. And, and, and I think this is a time for opportunity as well. I, I just hope the community does respect that.
Technically, he had a question.
Oh, he said it was rhetorical.
I, I wanted to address the rhetorical question a little bit. I don't, I don't think that, and I think that this ties into budget because of the numbers affect the budget, right? And that's been kind of the conversation happening in the community as well. I don't think that we will ever have a hundred percent of the community in public education, it's impossible. And there's a number of reasons why people choose private schools and homeschool, and I respect those reasons. And some of them have to do with perhaps, they want children to have more of their religious beliefs embedded into their education. We can't do that in public education, and that's okay. And so I want to say, I don't think that, that should necessarily be the goal, because we can't meet specific needs like that is a very specific need that public education can't touch. And so that's, and there's reasons for that. And so I just wanted to mention that, and I do appreciate that we need to find out, like, how to bring perhaps some families back in that have, feel like they're, that their thoughts and their needs are disregarded. And that has been brought up as well. And so like, how can folk feel more, more heard and seen in the district? So I agree with that part, but I did want to name that, because out of respect for the community that do have those needs that we can't meet, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. So, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, where we actually have to pass. Where we actually have to decide if we're going to pass this thing or not. So at this point, I would be willing to entertain some motions. Not everybody all at once.
Chair, I move that the Corvallis School District budget for 2025, '26 and the aggregate amount of one hundred eighty-two million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars for all funds be approved.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. So, Teresa Jones? Okay, so uh Therese Jones has moved and Cassandra Inman has seconded. At this point, it is now open for discussion to the motion on the table, and if anybody wishes to propose an amendment to the budget, now is the time. Therese?
Uh, as we um consider whether to vote um for this budget or not, I just want to first say say thank you. This is, I've done nine budgets, this is the most transparent budget, the most tran- transparent process, so it might not be perfect, but it is, we have made huge gains in this and I I think there are many community members who do see um that process, and so thank you, cuz that has come at um at a a a level of effort I can't really even wrap my head around. I wanna encourage us to think about a couple of things um besides what the parameters of the budget committee are. This is an opportunity for us um as we think about this budget to think creatively about as a district, how we can set goals that go um above and beyond even anything we've really imagined, things like deciding that we're gonna treat music or art education as a core subject, that we're gonna find a way to measure its outcomes, that we're gonna find a way to measure its impact on um other subjects as it relates to learning in other more traditionally academic, um considered to be academic subjects. I'm excited for the challenge of making that happen because I think the community has issued that challenge, that we have to figure out how we're gonna do that. And I am excited to be a board member at the time when I think we're gonna need to undertake that challenge. So um I hope you'll think about uh coming into the next year um with how can we get where we all as a community feel like we really want to be, um because I know there are opportunities uh for us to do that. So I just wanna thank you and um and I'll see if any other discussion, but those are my thoughts about this. This is, we have an opportunity to do something here and I I think we have the energy and I think we have the know-how in our community to figure out how to do it and we need to, we need to capitalize on on that.
Any other discussion? Anybody wish to propose any amendment, Sammy?
Thank you, Chair. So I want to build up on the discussion that we had. I agree, this is my tenth budget on the school district, this is the most transparent one, the most engaging among the board members and budget committee members and the community. And with transparent and engagement plus dire situation comes discomfort. And I believe the conversations are uncomfortable for obvious reasons, because of our care for the children, because of the scarce resources and the really um important mandates that we have to give every child the best opportunity and to engage them. So for that, I really want to thank everyone who have participated in this process, the community members who agreed or disagreed, who engaged, who asked questions. Lauren, thank you, thank you, thank you, you have done phenomenal work, not only preparing this ba- budget, shepherding it, but engaging with community members and giving every single person the ways that their ideas, their questions are really important to strengthen uh this institution. So really thank you, Ryan, for your team and Lauren. I will say this another ti- one more time, I hope I say it one more time and that's it. Uh, this is another May Day situation, last year I said it's a May Day situation. Uh, we trust our public schools and we ask of our community to step up and continue trusting the school system by engaging, by asking the hard questions, and by thinking about how can I make sure the children in our household and our neighborhood and also in the entire community are going to get a better opportunity. And I don't know what that answer is, but I believe the budget in my hands right now is the best case scenario, given the questions what we asked, given the scenarios we examined, given the resources that we have the highest confidence that we will receive, and I know there might be worst-case scenarios that we need to be prepared for, given the federal, state, and even local uncertainty. And with that, I really want to say I am optimistic with the dire situation we're in, that while the governor and the co-chairs of the Ways and Means try to balance between different priorities, transportation, education, that they at least give us the eight eleven point four billion dollars, not less, and if there is any bills that's passed with extra fund, extra funding needs, that they fund those needs. Uh, I think we need to put that energy there, we need to keep our energy here by asking the tough questions and reminding ourselves about the goals. We do have goals about the music, we have goals about the arts, we have goals about student safety, and we have the goal and the dream that's every school is going to be the castle of hope where no child goes hungry, no child feels unsafe, and every child is engaged and is going to feel that they're growing every day, and I know we're not there yet, but we need to continue keeping our goal there, and I think that's the mandate that the school district, the board, the superintendent have in mind and our educators in our schools have in mind every day, and I'm hoping this budget will get us closer there despite that we're putting more resources, but for much, much higher demands. So it is challenging and I think that's makes it really a wicked problem, it's not an easy problem, and I appreciate us uh as a community, as a budget committee, really wrestling with this uh hard problem and arriving where we are right now. So with that, I am in favor of the motion, and I am in favor of us dreaming big, asking the question, what would it look like to have more affordable housing that will get, rather than one out of five house, um homes uh with one child, will get more children in the community? What would it look like for Corvallis to be a welcoming community for immigrants and refugees with higher student population? Uh, that's what populated many communities is being welcoming to refugees and immigrants and also retaining our community members who live in the community. And I don't know what that answer looked like beyond the budget committee, but it is a goal that I hope we can aspire toward, and with that, I am in favor of the motion and in favor of this continued work that we're doing together.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to reiterate that um I remain conflicted about the budget and not because of anything that Lauren has prepared, just because of the situation that we're in, and it's um and I've just, I just remain conflicted and disappointed in the lack of support that we have um in our budget that we receive from the state and um just processes that are completely out of our control, and I just wanted to say that, um it's, yeah, it's tough.
Thank you, Shawna.
Just wanted to echo some of the gratitude, Lauren, I I hope that you're hearing because you have done so much work and the transparency that you've brought, the extra time and effort you've put in, it's it's a big risk to get up in front of the community and hold a community meeting as you and Ryan and Lou and the Public Schools Foundation did, and the community really, they showed up and they responded, and I've heard so much gratitude for folks saying, we want more of that, and so hopefully that gets reflected back to you too. I did get multiple emails, well, lots of emails this week, but a few that came directly to me that said, please tell Lauren thank you, that the community is seeing the work that you're doing, so I hope that you're hearing that too, because you really are getting a lot directed at you that isn't your fault, and in fact, you're helping us understand it and helping bring clarity and authenticity to it, so thank you for that. Also, just wanna thank other community members who who have stood up and brought energy and motivation and just that encouragement that I hope that that collaborative work continues because we need to do this all together. Ryan, last year when we were in the midst of, as Lou reminded us, cuts to arts, to libraries, um to music at that time as well, um you have a quote that, if you're okay with me bringing it forward, I remember the moment you said, it stinks, it stinks. And that stuck with me in that moment because I thought, yeah, it does, and that about sums it up, and I very rarely hear you say things to that effect because you're very stoic and wanting to hold everybody else's emotions and really um coming and bringing that patience and that calm in the way that you do through all the ups and downs so that others are able to regulate um in the way that you model, and it does stink. And as you you said too, Lou, I'm also disappointed, you're not, not in you, Lauren, not in our district doing it the best that we can in this moment, but in public education being woefully underfunded. And that comes with really hard decisions that I, we have a lot of work to do, to figure out how do we deal with that and how do we deal with funds going down in a way that actually reflects what students need, what they want, what their families want, what we want, as well as parents and community members. Um, and I appreciated your enthusiasm, Therese, in terms of just leaning into some hope of, okay, we've got work to do and we are the community to do it, and I keep thinking that as well, that I feel so fortunate to be in this community because I feel like we have the best chance of doing this well and wanting to do it well, and we've gotta do it together with those of us in the room, community members, students, educators, um everyone else involved, and just really appreciate folks being willing to try and do this as authentically and transparently as possible, so, thank you.
Cassandra?
So I was thinking about the privilege that I've had to be part of this, and I wanna say thank you for that and thank you for creating this space for listening, and I think that's the most important role that we, that that's the way we contribute to the public policy process. I think sometimes the loudest voices are the ones that win the day oftentimes, but this process has created space to elevate some of those quieter voices. And yeah, I think that's how we build trust in people and I wanna say thank you for, thank you for that, on behalf of myself, but for the Corvallis community.
Bernie?
Lauren, uh, this is my first uh budget process bu- uh here as a school board member, but I've participated in government um budget processes for decades, and this is by far the most transparent I've ever seen, so thank you for all your work and thank you for taking the time to answer my long questions and everything else along the way. I think you mentioned earlier, uh, this is really the starting point, this budget is the starting point, the devil's is in the execution, and I I really encourage you to continue to 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 look through as you're executing the budget, to find savings, to 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 think of ways that we can actually uh reach our goals, given some of the constraints we have, we can find savings here and there and and uh as as long as we keep uh keep eyes on the ball, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Does anybody wish to propose any amendments? I just wanna make sure that it is clear that we are giving everybody ample opportunity to propose an amendment should they choose. Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the discussion and bring it to a vote. Uh, this is a roll call vote, so we will have to do it one at a time. If the secretary could call the roll and respond by saying yes or no.
Judah?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Yon?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Lou?
I'm feeling, I've, I'm in abstain.
Okay. Andrew?
A reluctant aye.
Cassie?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Okay, so that is, let's see, we had twelve present, so eleven yes, one abstention, that passes. Okay, so now we have a budget, how are we gonna pay for it?
I move that the permanent tax rate of four dollars point four six one four per one thousand of assessed value be levied for operating purposes, that a local option tax rate of one dollar and fifty cents per one thousand of assessed value be levied in support of the general fund and that a tax amount of sixteen million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eleven dollars be levied for the service of bonded debt obligations.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so Judah has moved and Therese has seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, with that, I will again close the discussion and again call the roll for voting yes or no.
Judah?
Aye.
Shawna?
Aye.
Bernie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Yon?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Cassie?
Aye.
Therese?
Aye.
And Tony?
Aye.
By a by a twelve to zero, that passes unanimously. Okay, so next, uh, we have the consolidated action where we approve the minutes from the May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meetings, uh, because this one does not need to be a roll call, I'm just gonna simply ask for unanimous consent uh for these to be passed. Is there any objection? No, sweet, okay, those are approved, and now it's my turn to get on my soapbox. So first, I do wanna thank um everybody who has been here, all the mem- community members that have done this, this is my fifth budget cycle with the district, my seventh overall cuz I had two with the city of Corvallis beforehand. And this has probably been one of the hardest budget cycles that I've ever had to go through. Sounds like it's probably one of the hardest that many, not all of us have, and I did struggle with it greatly. Um, I wanna start also by saying a very specific thank you to Lauren and Ryan and all of their staff that have worked tirelessly and thanklessly over this last year to bring us this budget. And once this is done, what's your reward? You gotta do it again for next year. It is a Herculean and Sisyphean task that I do not envy. I also wanna congratulate the members of the board that won their reelection, and I also want to thank those that ran for board, even though they did not win, to help drive the conversation and move it in a way that I think was definitely needed. And also, if there are any openings on this committee next year, I invite you to apply. We'd love to have your voices here. We have heard a lot from members of our community, parents, teachers, and students about their concerns about this budget, and so we need to make sure that we understand where that frustration is coming from. We ignore that frustration at our peril. To paraphrase Ryan, this budget stinks. I wanna stress, though, that is not the fault of the staff who worked on it, you did the absolute best you could with what you were given. And I'm sure that everyone sitting at this table would not approve these cuts if they felt that they had a choice. Now, we know Shawna is a graduate of the Corvallis School District, I don't know how many other people here are, but I am, I grew up literally right across the street. You stand in the parking lot, you can see the houses I lived in. I went to Adams and I went to Westernview. So while I do not have a child myself in this district, I have benefited from it, and that is part of why I'm here, to help those who come after me have the same and better opportunities that I did. So to those that have spoken out loudly about how this budget does not fully align with our stated values as a community, I wanna say that I hear you and your concerns are valid. But I'm gonna repeat here what I said last year, and I'm speaking to the larger community as a whole. The way that we fund schools in Oregon is broken, and we are not the only ones facing difficult decisions and declining enrollment. Measures five and fifty are in need of significant reform and they are not working the way that we were promised they would. Everything is also connected. The average sale price of a home in Benton County last year was six hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, this is information that I got straight from the Benton County Assessor's Office. That, that is a mortgage payment of over thirty-four hundred dollars a month at a six and a half percent interest rate and a ten percent down payment before taxes and insurance. We have seen home values in Benton County continually rise for the last ten years, which is unheard of. Last year was the second lowest number of new homes delivered in Benton County in the last ten years, with sixty-seven in the entire county, beating only twenty-twenty-three's fifty-one. And the majority of those homes were not inside Corvallis. Corvallis is the most rent-burdened city in the state and one of the top ten most rent-burdened cities in the entire country. What families with young children can afford to live here? So the next time you wanna oppose a new housing development, remember this budget. The next time you wanna support a policy that increases the cost of building and renting housing, remember this budget. I urge you to reach out to your state legislator and ask them what they are doing in Salem to give local communities more control of how their schools are funded. And I again urge the members of this board- And I again urge the members of this board to do the same. Without significant structural changes to how Oregon schools are funded, and without significant changes to how Corvallis views and approaches growth, this pro- this problem will only continue and will only get worse before it gets better. Thank you for indulging me. And with that, I will solicit a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say no. We are adjourned.